Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call our Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, March the 17th to order, and I want to welcome each of you for coming and thank you for coming tonight. If you would at this time, if you have mobile devices, would you please check those and put those on silent for me? And if you are a speaker tonight, when you come up to the podium, if you will speak into the microphone so Kay can get that recorded, we would appreciate that. Tonight, we're going to have the invocation will be Pastor Timothy Fortune from Horizon Church here in Morganton, and our pledge of allegiance will be by the Oak Hill Elementary Math Counts Team. So at this time, if you will rise with me for our invocation, and as soon as the invocation is over with, Elementary Team or Oak Hill Elementary, if you'll move forward for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Father, we bless you tonight as we come before you at this meeting, Lord. We first of all give you thanks and glory for this community, for our leaders in this community. Father, we thank you for this great place that we have to live. Not only do we live in a great country, but Father, we live in a great county, and we thank you for that. Father, we ask for your presence in this meeting, that you would give wisdom and knowledge and understanding to our leaders as they guide and as they do what they need to do, Father, to continue to make our community a great place to live and a great place to reside. Father, we thank you for what you're going to do, and we give you all the glory and all the honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, if y'all will move forward. Okay, there, there.
(inaudible)
If y'all will remain standing, we're gonna come down and take a picture with you, if that's okay, and then we're gonna put it up on the board over here for you to see. Come on. Smile. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that all Commissioners are here except for Commissioner Britton, who has an excused absence. That will be along with the county manager and the county attorney. Moving on to item number four on our agenda is approval of minutes from January the 20th, which was a regular meeting, February the 3rd, the pre-agenda meeting, February the 3rd, our Commissioners' special meeting, and February the 17th, the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Gentlemen, I think we've had time to look over those, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the motion by Wayne to accept all of these minutes. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It'll be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Item number five is the approval of the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. You've heard the motion by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, raise your right hands. It'll be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. For presentations this evening, our first presentation is from Senior Services Community Champions for Meals on Wheels Week proclamation, and that will be presented by Angie Ross, Burke County Senior Services Nutrition Program Coordinator. Thank you, Angie, if you'll come on up, please, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. I came out tonight to give you a little bit of information about what a community champion is. March has been designated by Meals on Wheels of America as Meals on Wheels Month, and this week is designed as Community Champions Week, where prominent members and elected officials are invited to come out and join the numerous volunteers that I have in raise awareness of meals and to get out and deliver those meals. And so what we do is, we deliver a nutritious meal every day, Monday through Friday, to approximately of 110 seniors. And we're not only delivering this meal, but we're also doing a safety check, and we're also providing a smile for them. And these meals are delivered with numerous volunteers throughout Burke County, because we have 12 routes. So I came tonight to ask, to personally invite each and one of you to take part in this Community Champions Week and come and join us as we deliver meals this week to our seniors. So if you'd like any more information, you can call me at the Burke Senior Center and just ask to speak to me, and we'll get you some more information if you'd like to be a part of that.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Angie?
Mr. Chairman, I read, I believe I was gonna use that, and I don't believe I have it. What's the total number of meals you feed per year?
Um, right now, per year, it varies, because we have so many people that come on and off the program. So we average about 110 a month, so if you multiply that times 12, it's about 1,200, roughly about 1,200 meals per year.
You tell them we appreciate for every single meal they deliver.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Angie? Now, therefore, Johnny W. Carstwell, Chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 16th through 20th, 2015, as Community Champion for Meals on Wheels Week. In Burke County, North Carolina, I urge every citizen to take time this week to honor Meals on Wheels, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who came for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the 2015 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help end senior hunger in America, so no senior goes hungry. Thank you, Angie, so very much.
Thank you.[452.03][452.03](applause)
And I do need a motion for this proclamation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify. That's four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much, Angie. Our next item is from the Strategic Alliance for Burke Youth, a resolution certificate of appreciation from the Burke Youth Pay It Forward Excellence in Leadership and Service, presented by Sarah Durgans, Director for the Strategic Alliance. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I hope you all don't mind I have some friends joining me.
I noticed you did. That's good.
These are all students who we work with, and they are actually part of the Burke Youth Pay It Forward movement, and it was founded by Emily Shuford here in 2010. Together and with other students, about 45 other students collectively, they've raised, they've done over 4,000 hours of community service. And this service is extended anywhere from working in community gardens, raising money for folks who need medical things in the community. This weekend, some of, most of them actually were up around 5:00, 6:00 in the morning serving at a pancake breakfast to benefit our local fire department. And so I come before you tonight on behalf of the Strategic Alliance for Burke Youth, and as a group that we have, we've been working closely with them and just been amazed at the leadership and initiative that these young folks have taken. And so we would like to ask you for a resolution this evening to honor them.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments for Sarah or the group that's with her? Well, I want to commend you youth. I've been a part of SABE for how long, Sarah?
Number of years.
Couple of years now, and I do appreciate everything that you do. It is our goal to make you future leaders of Burke County, and we just have every confidence in your group of young people that you are gonna be the leaders that we're looking for, so I commend you for everything you do. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Burke County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Burke County, publicly commends Burke Youth Pay It Forward for their outstanding contributions to the communities they serve, and we thank you. And I need a motion for that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor? It'll be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Sarah, so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.[602.16][602.16](applause)
Our next item is presentation of our new BDI President and CEO, and that will be done by Brian Steiner, County Manager. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and our viewing audience. I want to introduce you to Alan Wood, our new BDI CEO and President. Alan, if you want to step up to the mic for a minute. Alan had been working in Stokes County for a number of years, and prior to that, he was in Caldwell County and involved in economic development and the efforts to bring, was it Google that you brought to Caldwell County? Well, if you want to just say hello and do things about yourself, it'd be great.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the invitation to be here this evening. I am in the office and working. Been here for seven days now. I've appreciated the people who have reached out to me so far. I think this is a tremendous opportunity. Burke County and Morganton, I think, are poised to grow, and I hope in some small way that I'm able to assist with that, and we're gonna be working hard. And I want to let you gentlemen know that I'll be in touch with each of you, so we can sit down individually and get your thoughts and ideas on what it is we're trying to do. And I'll be out in the community. My plan for the first 90 days is to talk to as many people as I can about economic development to get their ideas, and then we will have a plan in place crafted around those conversations to do the best we can to improve the economy in Burke County.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments for Alan?
I'm just tickled pink that the rumors are flying, he's gonna move Google to Burke County.[717.00][717.00](laughter)
Maynard, he's already had the governor here, and that's his third day on the job.[723.00][723.00](laughter)
No, we welcome you to Burke County seriously.
Anyone else? Alan, on behalf of the board, we certainly do appreciate you recognizing the fact that Burke County is a great place to live, work, and play. You said, "In a small way," we want it in a large way, your participation. And we, from what I've seen so far, we are in great hands, and we welcome you and your wife to Burke County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our scheduled public hearings, our first hearing is the Morganton Building Reuse Grant Project NIT in public hearing, and that will be presented by Brian Steiner, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You've got a company now we can discuss, they're called American Hospitality Furniture LLC. It's a furniture manufacturing company producing custom furniture for the upper and middle-to-high-end hotel industry, such as the Ridge Carlton and Four Seasons. They're about $1.5 billion annual sales in the hotel furnishing industry yearly, and no one manufacturing domestic company is handling all of this, so this company is coming here to try to meet some of that need. Some of this had been outsourced to China, and it takes long for things to get here, and people don't get to see things in production that they've ordered, so that's some of the reason why this is coming back reshoring to the United States. By having a plant here in Morganton, people can come, if they have an order, they can work with their provider, see the production before it gets too far along, and make sure that they're happy with the product. I think they've applied for a grant of $212,500 for building reuse. They've done that through the city of Morganton, and as we have in the past, we pay half of the 5% local match, and that is what you've been requested to do here this evening. If I can get to that on my stuff here, I'll go into the... All right. Let's see, the city of Morganton plans to apply for a building reuse grant in the amount of $2,200, $2,200, $2,2500, I'm sorry, for Project NIT. Approximately 71 jobs will be created initially. The grant, if awarded, requires a 5% local match in the amount of $10,625. The local match, in accordance with the county's customary practice, will be split equally between the county and the city, with each entity paying $5,312.50, and we are here to have the required public hearing on that matter.
Madam Clerk, I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to the Morganton Building Reuse Grant for Project NIT? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Brian on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, just note that 71 more jobs, and we can certainly use them.
That is correct. Anyone else? Okay? Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve an appropriation of general fund, fund balance in the amount of $5,312.50 for the county's portion of the local match for Project NIT's building reuse grant, if needed.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion. What is your pleasure? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Madam Clerk, I'll be four to nothing. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our next scheduled public hearing is zoning map amendment request, ZMA 2015-01, presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, ladies. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. This is a rezoning request from Mr. Klein. Mr. Klein is wishing to rezone a 5.54-acre parcel of land with an existing 21,240-square-foot structure on it. Mr. Klein has indicated that his intent is to use the structure as an indoor recreation center. The center will initially include batting cages and add other amenities as the business model develops and as demand is increased. The property is currently zoned industrial, which does not permit commercial uses of this nature. Mr. Klein has decided to request the property be rezoned to a straight general business district. The other option was that it could have been rezoned to a general business district conditional use, where we would specify exactly what was allowed. The applicant proposes minor interior renovations to the structure as needed for the proposed businesses. This zoning map amendment request is to rezone the parcel, and it's located at 3679 Cook Road, and it's identified for the record as PIN number 2723615891, and that's located in the Drexel Township of Burke County. As mentioned, the property is a 5.54-acre tract of land with one existing metal structure, and the parcel is accessed from Cook Road. Cook Road is a local road that is accessed off of Drexel Road. The parcels adjoining this property to the east, west, and south are all zoned R2 residential, and there's low-density conservation adjoining the parcel to the north. There are multiple general business district properties to the northwest at the intersection of Drexel Road and Cook Road, which is only about 400 or 500 feet from there. The adjacent land uses are as follows. There is a single-family home located to the north. There is a single-family home located to the east, and also a single-family home is located to the west. The property to the south is vacant, and the subject parcel is screened by existing woods on all four sides. The existing structure was constructed in 1980, so it was constructed prior to county-wide zoning, and it was once operated as a manufacturing facility, and that facility was Irvin's Brothers Frame Finishing. I don't know if you all remember that, but that's the structure we're talking about. The existing parking area is gravel. There are no known streams on the property, however, there is a floodplain that's identified in the FEMA floodplain maps. However, there is no development proposed in that area. The property records show that the parcel is served by public water and a private septic system. The parcel is located within the triple-community fire district. As far as conformity with the comprehensive plan, this one falls within the I-40 corridor study and plan that was adopted in 2003, and it is the current comprehensive land use plan for the area. The proposed zoning to general business would reduce the intensity of land use development allowed for this parcel. Therefore, we don't see any conflicts with the existing residential neighbors or other commercial businesses that are surrounding this property. We believe that it would be appropriate to, in essence, to downzone the intensity on the parcel. The request for general business zoning could be appropriate for the location for several reasons. There are multiple parcels zoned general business within the immediate area. The proposed zoning from industrial to general business would, to some extent, even lessen the impact of proposed land uses. The 2003 I-40 corridor study recognizes that certain properties within the I-40 corridor are suitable for commercial uses and recommends future commercial expansion within the area. If done appropriately, the change of use from industrial manufacturing facility to a commercial indoor recreation facility could be an improvement to the property and an asset to the community. The property currently has one vacant industrial structure, which is bringing no revenue to the property owner or the county. If the rezoning were approved, the existing structure would be renovated, which in turn would enhance the property without harming the environment. Additionally, new development would add both social and economic value to the community, in our opinion. So staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning request, and a planning board voted 5-0 to recommend approval of this request as well. You would also have to consider a statement of zoning consistency, and I will read that statement at this time. The proposed amendment to the official zoning map has aspects which are consistent with the I-40 corridor plan and the Burke County zoning ordinance. The amendment also proposes the establishment of a recreational facility to benefit the citizens of Burke County. This in turn has the potential to enhance and revitalize the property.
All right, Madam Clerk, I am now going to open the public hearing for the request for ZMA 2015-01. Is there anyone here to speak to that matter from the public? Hearing not from the public. Madam Clerk, I will close the hearing. If you, Mr. Klein, if y'all will step forward with Scott. Gentlemen, any questions or comments for the Kleins and/or Scott?
Well, the only question, I think, we asked most of our questions at our earlier meeting, but did anybody show up in opposition at your board's meeting?
Yes, sir, we've had no calls. Actually, somebody called to support this request today.
Good.
Mr. Klein, your intent is to have indoor facility, and that would be your only intent?
That's the only intent. It will have indoor baseball, basketball, soccer, football, conditioning, strength conditioning, so we're going all out.
How would you, how do you do that inside that building, if you don't mind?
Okay. Approximately 90 by, the building's 100 foot wide, so 90 by 100 would encompass six batting cages, be full, major league, high school, college level, and I can open up the cages and it becomes an indoor infield. You can take full infield to a high school, if it's raining, you know, Patton High School, Dron High School, Freedom, they could call me, they could come over and actually have it take infield practice, full, just like they would outside, and have batting practice also. I can put a half-court basketball court in there, so I can train athletes, half-court basketball, do some condition drills. The other side, I can open up the baseball and still have an indoor football soccer by approximately 50 by 160 feet. You could actually train conditioning, soccer, football, you could have a practice in there. So, and also a mat area on the other side that will just do some stretching and getting warmed up.
Okay, so is your intent to put pitching machines in the building?
No, no.
Okay.
No pitch, it's all coach pitch or person pitch.
All coach, okay.
Yes.
All right, is there enough room in the parking lot for an activity bus to come in, turn around, and get back out?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions or comments, gentlemen. Okay, the chair will entertain any motion.
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Burke County zoning map as it relates to ZMA 2015-1, and also then adopt the zoning consistency statement.
Okay, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Madam Clerk, that'll be four to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, moving down to informal public comments. Did anyone sign up?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving forward to the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize the county manager, Brian Steiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have several things on your consent agenda. Number one, BOC resolution supporting the display of the national motto, "In God We Number two, clerk resolution amending the board's 2015 meeting schedule. Number three, clerk appointment and removal to Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Number four, clerk appointment of Gwen Huffman to the Nursing Home CAC. Number five, clerk appointments to the Council on Aging. Number six, county manager proclamation declaring Youth and Government Day. Number seven, EMS, appointment of Assistant Medical Director in agreement. Number eight, Fire Marshal Hazard Mitigation Plan and Resolution. Number nine, JCPC, appointment, removal of members to JCPC. Number 10, tax records retention schedule amendment. Number 11, tax release refund report for February 2015. Number 12, tax, tax collection report for February 2015. And the final item is tax EMS collections report for January 2015.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Brian's report. What's the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept those consent agenda items as presented.
All right, you've heard Maynard's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It'll be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome, sir.
Moving to items for the decision, our first item is an appointment and removal to the Library Board of Trustees, and that will be presented by Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Deborah Ferris's term on the Library Board of Trustees as a Valdez representative ended December 31st, 2014. She did not submit an application for reappointment. Therefore, the board is asked to remove her name from the official roster and thank her for her service to the community. Also, seat number one, representing Morganton, is vacant. An application was received from Joan Rovenstein. Her appointment is recommended by the library director, and the term would end December 31st, 2015. Seat number 12, also representing Morganton, is vacant. Applications were received from Sherri Willard and Shaylee Forney. The term is for three years and ends December 31st, 2017. The first motion is to remove Deborah Ferris's name from the roster and thank her for her service to the community. The second suggested motion is to appoint Joan Rovenstein to the Library Board of Trustees for seat number one to complete an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2015. And the third motion is either to appoint Sherri Willard or Shaylee Forney to the Library Board of Trustees representing Morganton for seat number 12, for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we accept this recommendation as presented by the clerk.
Okay, the third motion, though, we will have to either appoint Sherri Willard or Shaylee Forney to the board. There's three motions, and the third motion was to either appoint Sherri Willard or Shaylee Forney, one or the other, to seat number 12.
Does anybody know either one of them that would like to, could recommend over the other one?
I don't.
My computer just jumped back to the beginning. Can you believe that?
Okay, we'll give you a moment to get back then.
So, Maynard, your motion, your first motion covered the first two items?
Mm-hmm. Let's go ahead and, we can, let's go ahead and do the first two, if that's okay with you, Maynard, to accept the first two. All right, all in favor, the first two motions by Maynard, signify by raising your right hand. Four to nothing, all right, and then we'll move on to the number three, the appointment of Sherri Willard or Shaylee Forney. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to appoint Sherri Willard to the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, we've heard Wayne's motion to appoint Sherri Willard. All in favor? All in favor, or any other motions besides Sherri? Okay, all in favor of Sherri, raise your right hand. Four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. Okay, that's our only item for decision, so we'll move to our reports and comments. JR, if it's okay, I'm going to start with you, and if you can have something, I think you're going to read into the record for us.
I beg your pardon, sir.
Okay, I caught you off guard, right?
Oh.
The Drexel litigation. To read in the record.
The... The county and the town of Drexel and the Drexel Foundation have settled their differences in a lawsuit that was filed in 2012, and that agreement and release has been reduced to a document. The document has been approved by all three boards, and the document has been executed by the representatives of the town of Drexel, the Drexel Foundation, and the county of Burke. That agreement and release has now been filed with the clerk of court, and the board just needs to approve the agreement and release in open session. It's done so in closed session, but the public meeting law requires that whenever a settlement is reached, that the board then come into public session and affirm the meeting or affirm the decision.
All right, somebody would like to make a motion to affirm what we did in closed session. Is that what you're asking me to do?
Yes, if we could have a motion to affirm the agreement and release entered into between the town of Drexel, the Drexel Foundation, and the county of Burke as filed with the clerk of court, that would be an appropriate motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands.
Just a second.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
You know, that was... That's not on our agenda. And, you know, not that it's going to make any difference, but it probably needs to be...
Well, as it's something that has already been approved by the board in closed session, this is just the confirmation that is required by 143A3 to come out of closed session and report to the public body and enter the agreement into the minutes. So it really wouldn't be an agenda item.
Chair, would proper procedure not be... We're going to go in closed session to approve and change that, that we did approve final terms and conditions?
Already been.
Well, we did that at our last meeting, at our last regularly scheduled meeting, and then the other parties have likewise approved it, so all that we need to do at this point is to confirm the agreement.
So therefore, it wouldn't need to be on the agenda then, on this agenda?
No, sir, it wouldn't need to be on the agenda.
Okay, that's one of them. Thanks.
Because you've already approved it, you're just reporting now what you've approved.
Right.
So you're giving this as a report?
Yes, yes, it's the...
I think it's allowed as a report. I don't think we can take any action. We've already taken action now.
We're only affirming the action. We're not taking any other action. We are affirming that we did take the action. That's all he... That's... Am I understanding what you asked me for was affirmation?
Right.
That we did take the action, since it's already been reported in the public record and in the newspaper also?
Right, we're confirming in open meeting what we did in closed session.
To get it into the minutes.
Again, Mr. Chairman, my motion stands.
All right, all in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed, that'd be three to one, Madam Clerk. All right, JR, any other reports or anything you want to comment on?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wayne?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Maynard?
Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Great. All us Irish. Zach?
I'll have it.
All right, thank you so much. The only thing I'd like to say is we just... The governor made a great announcement down at Peds in Hildebrand, and it's just great to see that Hildebrand growing by leaps and bounds down there, and that manufacturing plant is doing really well, and the owner down there has soaked a lot of his money into it, and we are so proud of that. Also, I'd like to mention that the Newsherald has printed the state of the county address. If anyone's not read that, I would appreciate you going to see that, and they've also... They did abbreviated version in Sunday's paper, and the full context is online at the Newsherald, so if you can go read that. And also, we will have that on the county website shortly, okay? All right, anybody else? Okay, I won't turn it over to the county manager at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've got a picture here of the ceremony there in Hildebrand where Governor McCrory helped cut the ribbon Wednesday on the new $16 million manufacturing facility that is projected to create more than 205 jobs by 2018. Governor McCrory was joined by the U.S. Undersecretary of Commerce for International Trade, as well as the Walmart Vice President of U.S. Manufacturing. So we have a picture there of the actual cutting for our viewers to see if they couldn't be there on Wednesday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Vacancy announcements, Madam Clerk.
May I make a few announcements, Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am.
May I make a few announcements?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. The... We'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for EMS base number seven on Friday at 11:00 a.m. County offices will be closed April 3 in observance of Good Friday, and we have the following upcoming meetings, April 7, pre-agenda, April 28 is our regular meeting, which is a change that we just approved. Pre-agenda is on May 5, county assembly day, May 6. May 19 is our regular meeting, and May 26 is our first budget meeting. And I have one more. Veterans will hold an information fair on Saturday, April 11, at the National Guard Armory in Morganton from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a need to go to closed session to discuss threat and pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege or to discuss economic and development matters and discuss... Excuse me?
Beg your pardon.
You're not doing it same time?
No, that was just announcements. I'm sorry.
That's all.
Go ahead, ma'am.
We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees, the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton ETJ for the Board of Adjustment, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Library Board of Trustees, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, Foothills Regional Airport Authority, and the state has the following vacancies, North Carolina Museum of Art, the Cemetery Commission, Environmental Management Commission, and the North Carolina Finance Agriculture Authority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we have a need to go into closed session to discuss threat and pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to discuss economic and development matters, and to discuss personal matters as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11, paragraph A, 3, 4, and 6. Need a motion to go into close?
And five.
And five. All right, let's take a couple minutes before... All right, gentlemen, we got a proper motion to come out of closed session, and we are now back in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion to purchase property in the amount of $515,000 and the follow exhibit A of the sales contract.
All right, would you further that motion by saying the funds would come out of the established account?
Of the established account for the surplus, these books in your center of libraries.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Wayne discussing. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Madam Clerk, that will be four to nothing. If there's nothing else to come before the board, we will stay in recess until March 20, 2015, at 8:00 a.m., where we will convene in room 211, Foothills Park Education Center for the legislative breakfast.